I would like to call the Halifax Elementary School Committee meeting to order at 5:03 on Monday, May 9. We begin with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this you all telling me you're recording?
Yeah, he's recording.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Caesar, for recording this meeting tonight on behalf of Area 58. Would anybody in the audience like to be acknowledged or scheduled to speak at this time?
I do.
Two people, okay. Just whoever wants to go first, fine, just state your name and...
Hi, I'm Donald Klein. My wife had sent an email about a presentation she'd like to give. Unfortunately, she and my son got stuck at the doctors and are running late. We'd like to run a fundraiser at the elementary school. My son, who is 16, has been shaving his head for One Mission for kids with cancer for the last six years. He started at nine years old when he was a student at Halifax Elementary School. He liked to put, when he was doing that, he sold candy at baseball games and soccer games that he was involved in for $0.50 apiece and raised $350 on his own. He started this on his own. He asked us, myself and my wife, if he could do this. On his own, he saw an ad for One Mission. So we did. This will be his sixth year shaving his head. It will be my third year shaving my head. It will be my wife's third year shaving her head, or fourth year for my wife. He has set up with Mrs. Gill and Mr. Rosa at the high school, a club, One Mission Fundraising Club, and they're going to be doing some fundraising at the high school on a club level. We have a scheduled event here at the Town Hall Green on May 22. We're going to have Tika Lynn's Hair Salon be coming up and shaving heads. I'll be shaving my own head on the 22nd. Anybody who wants to come and have a haircut or have their head shaved for a donation to One Mission would be wonderful. Last year, our fundraising team came in sixth place in the state with over $6,000 raised.
Wow, congratulations.
Next week we're going to roll $7,000, and we already have, I believe I checked this morning, and it's like $6,350. Present moment, we're in seventh place in the state. This is a team of four people. Unfortunately, the person that's ahead of us in sixth place is a team of one person, and he's only ahead of us by like 150 miles, which is amazing. It all goes through great causes. If you want to look up One Mission, it doesn't do research. It helps families out for children. I'm a survivor myself. I was very, very fortunate. I had a young man's disease at 34 years old. And I can only imagine what a 12 or 14-year-old child would go through. I had testicular cancer. I'm clean now. I've had two trophies since then. Just goes to show that it is recoverable from. What do you would like to do for the fundraiser? Set up to have children and/or teachers donate change in a collection bin at the front desk. All donations are obviously going to go to One Mission to help children fighting cancer. And you'd also like to be able to put flyers in the school to advertise the buzz-off here on the town green on the 22nd and to spread the word about this. And like I said, they would have loved to have been here, and he was already to make the presentation, but he had to, again, a doctor's appointment, which we had to cancel a few weeks ago when the car blew up. So we had to get stuck in.
Okay. So are you seeking permission from the school committee to put flyers in the school?
Put flyers in the school and a donation bin.
Okay.
In the school.
Okay.
I'll ask the superintendent first.
Yeah, I think it's a conversation we need to have with administration, both central and building. And then can we get back to you on that?
Certainly. My son and my wife, Lori.
Excellent. And I'll check my email for that correspondence.
I'm sorry?
I'll check my email for her correspondence. She had mentioned she had sent an email to us.
I believe that she sent an email this morning to the school committee, yes.
Great.
And she has a flyer that's created. And again, they were going to bring a copy of it with her, but again, she's in Brockton.
Okay. Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Well, the doctor is very difficult to get into, like all doctors are right now.
Yeah.
So she couldn't miss the appointment today.
If you could ask her to send us that flyer, because I think we'd need to approve the flyer before we hang it up, that would be fantastic, and then we'll get back to you as soon as possible, because you want, the date is for May 22, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the May 22 is already been approved by the selectmen and the police chief, et cetera.
Right, but you want the flyers to advert... Oh, you're talking about the change. I'm sorry. I'm crossing the two events.
Yeah, the May 22 for the buzz-off here on the town green has already been approved.
Okay.
By the selectmen, police chief, et cetera, fire department. Everybody's on board with that already. So that will be happening. What we want to do is just to put the flyers into the elementary school. We've already squirreled away at the high school to put them in, but at the elementary school level, we'd like to put the flyers in to advertise that.
And additionally, to put the change jars out?
And the change jars.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll make sure that Lori gets a permission to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Anton. I am co-president of the Halifax Teachers Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We are here as an HTA to express that we are disappointed and disheartened at the school committee's role in the negotiation process. Your lack of compromise, good faith, and collaboration has brought negative consequences to our staff's morale and, most importantly, to our work environment. Your absence of negotiation, the contract offer presented, and the fact that we were the only town employees to not receive the stipend in 2021 communicates to us and the rest of the Halifax community that we, as educators, are not valued or respected. As an HTA, we have strived for a positive working relationship with the school committee for years. Our number-one goal is educating the children of Halifax, and we feel a collaborative relationship between us would benefit all stakeholders at the Halifax Elementary School. Yet, over the negotiation process, the school committee's priorities have been shown to us. As a staff, the passion, love, and energy we bring to our classroom every day has been deflated. We will continue to work towards a collaborative and respectful relationship with this committee, and we hope you choose to do the same.
Anyone else?
Can I please speak?
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jamie Galoney. I am fortunate to have two children at Halifax Elementary. In my time as a parent at HES, the creativity, compassion, and dedication I have seen from the teachers is truly inspiring. I want to thank you all for everything you do for the children of Halifax day in and day out. On those cold mornings when you're standing up before school in solidarity and on nights like tonight when you're attending meetings when you should be at home with your own families, please know that you are supported and appreciated by a large group of parents in this community. I understand the teachers have been fighting for a fair contract. I want to share some numbers from recent contract ratifications of neighboring districts. Over two years, Bridgewater-Ranham, 6%. Whitman-Hanson, 4.4%. Over three years, Abington, 6.75%. East Bridgewater, 5%. Middleborough, 6%. Wareham, 6.75%. West Bridgewater, 7.5%. Of the neighboring seven districts I previously listed, six of them have already posted job openings for next year. A sentiment that people love to echo is, "If you don't like it here, go teach somewhere else." If you keep pushing, that is exactly what will happen. Another common line is, "Quit if you don't like it. We'll just replace you." The number of college students going into the field of education and graduating with a teaching degree has declined over 35% in the past two years. Over the past 16 years, I have interviewed candidates for teaching positions. In prior years, depending on the subject, there would be upwards of 300 applicants for a single job opening, almost all of whom met the qualifications for the job. This year, that exact same job posting yielded only about 40 applicants, of whom less than half were viable candidates. This situation is not unique. It has been happening all year in districts all over Massachusetts. I can assure you, if you drive our dedicated teachers out of Halifax, no one is waiting in the wings to replace them. What will be left is our children being placed in classes that are doubled in size with teachers who aren't qualified. And when this happens in the frighteningly near future and everyone wonders how we possibly could have gotten to this point, I hope you all look back and remember this moment and recognize that it is a direct result of your utter lack of respect for these amazing educators that stand before you tonight. You will have no one to blame but yourselves. Right now, you have the power to change that trajectory. The decision is yours. I urge you to do better. Thank you.
So I've been on the board for a year, but I've lived in the town since the Jim Keegan Belt Street. I've lived in the town since 1974.
Excuse me, are you speaking as a...
No, I'm speaking as a school committee member, and if the council's here, they can stop me, but I take great offense to saying that this board does not respect the teachers, because this board has a tremendous amount of respect for these teachers, as do anybody that I know in this town. I take great offense to that. And as far as being deflated, well, I apologize if finances have to do with deflation in the classroom and they don't feel respected, but I have had two daughters go through the school, and my current daughter right now who's in the school is doing very well. She's on a roll once again, and every teacher she has is giving 100%. So I don't know that those statements were made for the majority or the minority, but I'm going to guess it was the minority. Thank you. We'll move on now.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Minutes from April 4. I would like to make one amendment or before...
Deletion.
Do we need a motion first?
No.
Okay. You have to say that we're operations. I would like to make an amendment too where it says others present, just to strike others who are standing outside with signs supporting teachers, because they're not listed, so only people who signed in on the sign-in sheet should be... Did you want to say something, Warren?
No, it's fine.
Can I ask, are you supposed to sign in if you're here at the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a sign-in sheet.
So if there are...
So with that deletion, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Articles relating to town meeting warrant. Do we have a copy of them in here, Dr. Pro?
I don't believe there was a copy in your packet. I don't know, I don't have the finalized version, but I know that Article 24 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $64,919 to repair the elevator at Halifax Elementary School or take any action thereon. Again, I don't know if this is the final version that you'll see tonight.
Okay.
Article 39, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $36,000 to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School or take any action thereon. Article 41, to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $110,000 for the repair and rebuild of the tennis courts at Silver Lake High School. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $38,323 for a new intercom system at the Halifax Elementary School or take any action thereon.
Okay. Do you have whether or not the finance committee and the board of selectmen are supporting those articles?
Board of Selectmen.
The intercom is the one that's not supported.
It's questioned.
They're waiting. They're waiting for comment. They're going to comment tonight.
The finance committee and the board of selectmen had questions. I believe capital plan was not for the intercom system, but the finance committee was, and the board of selectmen was split.
Okay. What about the other three articles?
I believe the other three articles are all being supported.
Okay. My next question is, just so we're organized before we get to the floor, who is presenting these articles? So I'm assuming Silver Lake would be Silver Lake, like the tennis courts, and the SRO will be presented by, I'm assuming, Paula Hatch or myself?
So Paula Hatch did say that she would be available this evening to move any articles forward. She also asked that Matt Durkey also be present for any facility-related question, and that would, he would also be helpful with regards to any facility-related questions for Halifax as well.
Okay. So the elevator and the intercom system, do you want me...
That would have to be Halifax, yes.
Okay. So I'm happy to present those articles at town meeting. Kane, are you staying, Mr. Bowdre, are you staying for our meeting tonight? Typically, you do, but I just want to make sure, just in case people have any questions. And also, Matt Durkey will be available, just because, I mean, elevator language is not my language, and neither is intercom system, so I'm happy to present the article and then maybe defer to you or Mr. Durkey if there are any questions for follow-up, if that's okay? Perfect. And then, do you have language? Go ahead. You'll play.
Oh, I was just going to say, there's also the one other item of the special town meeting for the, to cover the part of the deficit with special education transportation.
Okay.
See, I believe Cindy has all the motions. Is that correct?
Yeah. Mrs. Nolan's not going to be available tonight. So we have binders for the motions tonight, so I can just make that motion from the table.
Do you want me to do it?
You can. I can give you that motion.
Okay. I think you have enough to do. Might as well take something off your plate. Do you know what article it is in special town meeting? I don't have the warrant for me. I apologize.
It must have changed, because my number's a little different than yours. So in the special town meeting, I have it, it's Article 5 for the special education transportation deficit.
Do you have different article numbers for the...
I do, yeah.
Okay, what do you have?
I got this online, so I have Elevators, Article 18.
Okay. 66941, is that the number?
Yes. And then Article 34 is the intercom. $38,800.
18 and 34.
Article 33 is the tennis courts. And Article 31 is the school resource officer. And then Article 44 is Silver Lake Special, Silver Lake Stabilization Fund.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Okay. Thank you. I put the general budget discussion on here just because things change, move every day, so I didn't know if there was any update that we needed to be aware of before we hit town meeting floor regarding the budget. Any sort of deficit that's popped up or positive?
Nothing new, negative, negative situation that's popped up. The only thing I could add is that for the other district vocational, we did not get additional students, so that number may be a little higher than what was needed.
For next year?
Correct. But anything could change, but just usually people will live the deadline.
Yeah.
Work with that deadline and get additional students.
Do you know how many students we had applications for?
I think that there was zero.
Really?
In Halifax. The only students that are, will be going are those that are returning from this year.
And that's...
Three.
Three. Okay. That's good. Thank you. All right, next is the use of the school logo by candidates running for public office. So I put this on our agenda because there is currently a candidate that was campaigning using the Halifax Elementary School logo. And the reason I put this on the agenda is because I just want to make a statement that the school committee and the elementary school or the regional middle and high school do not endorse any public candidate running for public office. And so it's been brought to my attention that this candidate was using the logo, and it appeared as if the school committee or the school district was endorsing this particular candidate, and I just want to make a public statement that that's not correct. That's it. Anyone else has any further discussion about that? Okay. Discussion and possible vote of the MASC vice president. So please correct my language, but in our Silver Lake meeting, it was brought to us that Jason Fraser of Plimpton, a longtime member of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, is currently a candidate for vice president of that board, and I wanted to bring it to our committee to ask for sort of like an endorsement for him to take that position. Silver Lake did agree to support him. And did they send a letter on behalf of that or just kind of mention verbally that?
They... I believe they voted. So it became part of the minutes.
So I wanted to bring that forth to our committee. I don't know if any of you know who Jason Fraser is, but he was, he's currently on the Plimpton School Committee and the Silver Lake School Committee, and he's just wonderful. He's been a resource for all of us in the past on various committees, and I've reached out to him personally with questions regarding school committee business, and his, you know, wealth of knowledge is, I mean, you can speak to it also. You've worked with him for years.
Does anybody else to consult on Chapter 70, changes of funding? Jason's the guy to go to, so...
He also has a very good relationship with the Department of Education and the chairman of the Mass Association of School Committees, and he does a lot of legislative work also, so he has a lot of influence at the State House and is constantly advocating for this district, all the towns in the district. So I just wanted to offer our support as a school committee for him in this endeavor.
When is that election, when is that vote?
Ooh, good question. Do you remember? I believe it's coming up, and so that's why I wanted to get it on this agenda.
I believe it's June, but I...
That's what I was thinking as well.
I don't know if I have the document with me.
I want to say I was thinking June as well, so I believe it's coming up pretty quickly.
I'm sorry I didn't bring it with me.
That's okay.
The only reason I ask is because I would prefer to make a motion rather than abstain, so I'd be able to talk with him myself, because I don't know him. So if you need to vote tonight, then I would have to abstain without talking. I don't know. I apologize.
That's fine. And that's probably, I probably should have sent some information to the board prior to this discussion so you could make a more educated guess or vote, I should say. But if, I mean, we can still make a motion if someone else...
I would make the motion to endorse Jason for the vice president.
Okay. I'll second it. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. Well, the motion passes regardless, but I will connect you and Jason so you can speak to him.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Warrants.
The warrants were done last week, because they were being consistent with the normal meeting schedule, so that our firm is operating. And Jennifer Kenna was able to come in and sign eight warrants, totaling $736,623.07.
Awesome, very much. Thank you. We don't have any warrants to sign tonight, do we?
No.
Okay. Dr. Pro?
Okay. There are two things in your packet. One is the proposed meeting schedule for next year for our school committees. And you will notice there is highlighted on that list of possible meeting dates. A Tuesday, January 3. And you'll also notice for the joint school committee meeting in February, typically, we have been meeting at 6 o'clock. That joint committee meeting, we'd like to propose a 5:00 p.m. start because of the February 9 Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting. The joint committees meetings in the past, November, has been reserved for budget presentations like we did this year. February 9 would be shared cost positions. Obviously, we did a large number of shared cost positions this year, so the hope is that there will be fewer positions to discuss next year. And April 13 is traditionally goals and progress towards our strategy for district improvement.
Did, we also want to continue utilizing these joint meetings for like the special ed and the technology presentations?
Yes. On November 17, if possible, if the committee agrees. But she wanted to highlight the January 3, because that's...
A Tuesday.
A Tuesday, not a traditional night, but it kept us in line with the six weeks and...
I would move the...
Wait, I think the January 3, though, should be 2023.
Yes, you're right. Pretty catch. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think the transition that we made to move to have presentations with technology and special ed have been, which are easier on everybody. And yeah, it's instead of repeating ourselves four times.
I would move the calendar and the committee's schedule, the meeting schedule.
I haven't even looked at the calendar yet. One second.
Okay, so for the calendar, if you want to take it separately, I'd just like to point out some changes.
Okay. Let's vote the meeting schedule first.
I'll move it.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So with the calendar, we had a request to move the half-days from Wednesdays to Thursdays. We used to hold our half-days on Thursdays during the hybrid model. We moved them to Wednesday so that they wouldn't interfere with in-person learning time, or they interfere less with in-person learning time, because they were happening during those Wednesdays when students did not have a full day. We're recommending that we move back to Thursdays. We've been asked to move back to Thursdays from the Kingston Teachers Association. September 6 and November 8, we would like to put our in-service days on those days. Because of the elections, we have been asked by Halifax in particular, the town of Halifax, to move our in-service days to September 6 and November 8. So you'll notice there is not a February professional development day following February vacation. And then, the next thing is potentially more controversial. We have been informed by our food services director that starting next year, all school days, students must be provided with lunch, and that lunch must be provided in a congregate setting. The grab-and-go option is not going to be a possibility in the way that it's been implemented during the pandemic. So we would like to propose, and by we, I mean the administrative team, we would like to propose that September 29, sorry, I'm looking for all of them on the calendar, March 9, and June 1. These typically would say noon dismissal and no lunch served. We would like for the committee to consider a 12:45 release so that lunch can be more easily served in a congregate setting in our elementary schools. There is another day that's a noon release. We have not listed it here because it is the day before the Thanksgiving recess. We anticipate that that could pose a problem from the standpoint that these other early release days, our teachers would be staying for professional development, and lunch could be served the noon before Thanksgiving would require additional time for our staff, but in addition, it could also pose a problem for some families who may be leaving to visit family. So again, these are... These changes are driven by our investigation of how we would be able to effectively serve lunch in a congregate setting on half-days, recognizing that on the Thursday, the 23rd release right before Thanksgiving, we would have a difficult day, but not an impossible day, of providing a meal, most likely a breakfast, to students on that day and trying to provide it in a congregate setting to the best of our ability. Now, there are... Again, this was the end result of conversation with our administrative team. If you have any questions, we're happy to try to...
On, yeah, on all of the information you just gave, that's right. So, okay, getting back to moving the early release from Wednesday to Thursday. I'm just, it's probably me. I'm confused again. But you said the Kingston Teachers Association asked for this.
Yes.
What is, was Halifax Teachers, are they one of the same?
They're not one in the same. We all have the same calendar, right? So we all do our best to try to come to terms with whatever the calendar may be, and we're together. It came to my attention from the Kingston Teachers Association... It came to my attention from the Kingston Teachers Association. Um-
Were the Halifax Teachers asked? Uh, does it have, I, I'm confused. Is it, do they have a say in it or not?
Again, it was presented, um, this morning to each of the union leaders as to what my presentation today would, would include. I don't speak on behalf of the Halifax Teachers Association, um, so I, I can't, I can't answer that from that perspective. Uh, but I can, I can say that it was requested by one teachers union.
So for example, I remember last year, Gordon and myself were two years ago, we requested that one of the professional development days be scheduled for the second Tuesday in November because that's typically Election Day and we use our gym as a polling location. So we felt that in Halifax, that it would benefit our district to have a professional development day on that day. So in, in turn, we, we, as an administrative team, cohesively as a district, because we all follow the same calendar, went to Kingston and Plimpton and asked them to also jump on board with us moving that day. So I think that this is sort of what's happening here is Kingston has-
We're just receiving the information, obviously, tonight.
Right, right. So we don't need to vote on like, when do you need this finalized?
We like to present in, in the spring. Sometimes when there's no real changes, we vote the very same night. We can revisit this at our next meeting and vote it then. Obviously, our community, our families like to know for things like planning for, for next year, especially the start of school, those kinds of dates. So the sooner the better for our families, recognizing that we presented you with some, some changes to the way we typically schedule our half-days. Um, it's understandable that you may not be ready to vote this calendar tonight.
Yeah, who, so in, in change of the, the days to Thursday, I'm sorry I'm making this difficult.
No, no, you're not.
Who brought this to you? Why was it, why, why we, I'm sorry?
Can I just mention that prior to hybrid, it was off, they were always on Thursdays?
Right, but we're not in hybrid anymore.
Right, so it was because of how Wednesday was the remote day, so that, that worked better for the schedule.
Why are we looking to move it to Thursday now?
One, because it was a request by the Kingston Teachers Association. My understanding is, is that they prefer the Thursday night because it is a late night for them. It means they have one day on Friday that they, they come into school feeling less than optimal before they get the, the weekend to recover from, you know, three nights.
That's understood. Thank you. That cleared it up. Then I'd like to hear from the Halifax Teachers Association, see what they want before we vote on it. I mean, they, I'm, thank you.
Okay, we don't have to vote the calendar tonight, we can, um-
I strongly suggest to ask the representative. They have film on it right now.
Okay.
Well, all, well, all the teachers aren't here, but this is a minority.
But there is a representative of the union here though.
Union president's here, so.
We would like the Thursday too, yes. It just was late nights.
Is it the same for the Te- Halifax Teachers with the late nights? Is that, so if they prefer it, I'm-
We work until 8 o'clock.
You understand, I wanted to hear from Arone. I don't break the Kingston, but I think Arone, yeah, the same.
We appreciate that, thank you.
All right, so.
Should I make a motion to approve the calendar? It's presented them?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the calendar as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. So the district update, uh, the strategy for district improvement progress was presented on April 26th. That presentation was recorded and will, if it's not already, will be on our website calendar, uh, very shortly for those who were not able to attend or who would like to see it. Uh, thank you to our teachers and our principals and our leadership team for their efforts in helping us to reach our goals. Um, also, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that Chief Shubs has sent a revised MOU. Um, I have forwarded that to the Chair recently, so I would say at our next, um, meeting, we perhaps put that on the agenda for a potential vote.
I have not had a chance, nor, um, I believe we agreed at the last meeting that we took the vote that, uh, I would be meeting with the Chief and Council. That hasn't happened yet, so-
Yep.
The vote, um, is, is probably, will not happen next meeting.
No, our next meeting's not till July 1st.
Well-
So you have plenty of time.
Okay.
Between, it's almost two months between that one.
It's not June, that's right. Okay.
Yeah, we don't-
I, I, okay.
We don't meet in June unless we need to have like an emergency type meeting.
Okay, and I, okay, and I'm gonna be able to arrange that meeting through you, correct?
Yeah.
Because you would get, okay, the Council, you're gonna arrange that.
Yep, and, um, um, and like I said, unless we need to have a meeting in June for whatever reason, we meet July 1st for the closeout for the fiscal year. And so, but we'll figure it out. We're not voting on anything tonight in reverse of that MOU.
Two other things from our May 5th Commissioners Call. Uh, the COVID-19 testing program has been extended to the remainder of the year. You may recall that he was going to revisit that in April. Test kits will be available until the end of the school year. Um, in terms of accountability updates, they are moving towards, um, they have inquired about recalculating chronic absenteeism, um, and raising that from 10% to 20% of days in attendance. Um, so the second step is working, um, promoting a state regulation and seeing where that goes. But that's been proposed and we are hopeful that chronic absenteeism, um, given, encouraged absenteeism when students are sick, uh, may be, they may be providing us with some relief. So more information once that's official, uh, we will share that with you also.
Excellent. Thank you for following up on that, unless he just brought it to you because he was thinking the same things that we were thinking. Gordon to mind reader. All right. Well, that concludes our regular, our regular meeting, um, agenda. Uh, we will adjourn with some dates to remember.
Before you do, Youth and Rec wanted some information put out at this meeting. Is that possible?
That is possible.
I apologize. I thought it would be on the agenda.
No, we had a truncated agenda just because we have town meeting tonight, but if you have an update, Youth and Rec, by all means.
Um, I have the opportunity to speak with, uh, Mr. Steele. Um, and, uh, there's, the things that he wanted mentioned tonight was the school, uh, the school newspaper is, uh, is going, they're going ahead with it. They had a tremendous amount of interest, and I guess it's starting this week. Yes, okay.
Yes.
Um, the, uh, the Youth and Rec, they're planning a Woo Sox outing. Uh, they've done this before, um, down at the Paw Sox. It was very popular. They're gonna try to bring this back in July. Um, the trip's gonna be approximately $99, which includes the tickets, transportation on the bus. It's a coach, it's not a school bus. Um, and included with that are the tickets and $20 of spending money down at the park. Um, and they are also, uh, planning a sixth, fifth and sixth grade social. He's really, uh, working hard on a few different things, especially the fifth and grade, uh, fifth and sixth grade social to get back to pre-COVID. Uh, when I told my daughter that, she was very excited. Uh, so, uh, watch the town website for that. He said he was gonna try and get it. I, I don't know how it works, but he's gonna try to work with the school to get it out on Parents Square as well, uh, when they pick the date for that, when and if they pick the date for that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, May 30th is Memorial Day. June 3rd is Silver Lake graduation. June 20th, um, Juneteenth is observed and our next school committing, meeting is scheduled for July 1st. On June 1st, there is an early release at 12:45 PM. On June 3rd is Future Laker Day. So it's like when all the, the sixth graders go up, right, and spend the day at the middle school. All that, Josh, is the Future Laker Day.
No, it's, we're hosting.
Oh, can you talk about that for a second?
We're sixth grade, all the sixth graders that come to Halifax.
Oh.
With the PE teachers from each of the buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And then we are hosting.
Awesome. Great. Uh, June 13th is Field Day and pending a hurricane or anything like that. June 23rd is the last day of school and it's a noon release. Thank you for putting that part away. And that's it? With that, we need a motion?
I would move to go into executive session according to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 2, to discuss strategy with respect of collective bargaining for contract negotiation and an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific law approval of executive session meeting minutes of April 4th, 2022.
Not to return.
Not to return to open session, but to adjourn from executive session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Gordon?
Yes.
Myself is a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.